Okay, I'd like to reconvene our special meeting here tonight. We have received notice from the Warren County zoning office that they have completed the process of adopting a comprehensive plan that they are then recommending to the Board of Supervisors to approve. As such, we have to have a public hearing on that, and that's what tonight is all about. So the first thing we'll do here to reconvene is to move into a public hearing. Can I have a motion for that purpose?
I'll make a motion to go into a public hearing to review the 2024 to 2044 Warren County Comprehensive Land Use Plan with possible action.
Do you have a second? We have a motion, a second roll call, please.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye. Okay, the way that we're going to do this to start out is we're going to have a little presentation first to give us an overview of what the comprehensive plan is, and then we will open it up for comment following that. So if you'd like to start for us, please introduce yourself for the record and go from there.
Thank you, Mark. I'm Sarah Uncle. I am a planner with MSA. We've been working with the county for the last two years to develop the Warren County Comprehensive Land Use Plan.
You might want to make sure you have the microphone closer to you. Just pull it straight down to you. There you go.
I'm used to speaking to the crowd, but I will address you all. So we've developed a brief presentation tonight to go over why we plan and what's in the comprehensive plan. Planning is important for communities for a number of reasons. It establishes goals and standards as we prepare for future growth. Proactive planning anticipates future needs and outlines goals and objectives that guide decision-making. We prefer this to reactive planning because we want to be prepared for these decisions and not be making them as issues arise. So a comprehensive plan is necessary to have zoning ordinance in the state of Iowa according to Iowa Code 335. That's what we call our state zoning-enabling legislation. The plan is not an ordinance. It's a guiding vision for decision-makers. The state has outlined a set of principles that should be addressed through the planning process, each of which are addressed in the Warren County Comprehensive Land Use Plan. These include public participation, economic development, issues and opportunities, agriculture and natural resources, land use, housing, public infrastructure and utilities, transportation, community facilities, community character, hazards, intergovernmental collaboration, and implementation. So why do we plan? The plan provides consistent guidance for future growth. The planning team has accounted for various feedback that we gathered throughout this planning process. We heard from residents, stakeholders, from our elected and appointed officials, and created goals, strategies, and actions that the county can use to achieve that vision over the next 10 to 20 years. So our planning process started in November of 2022. We started with a county tour. We did outreach and engagement over approximately one year. We had a steering committee who engaged in six meetings, called them the Comprehensive Plan and Code Steering Committee. After that, we developed the plan that was in a review phase. We revised that based on feedback and had a draft plan that we presented at a community open house, which we then revised a final time to present the final plan, which has been on the project website for about two months now. This is our project schedule. As you can see, we kicked off in February 2023. I initially said November 2022. That's when we did our county tour and started gathering input. But our first CPCSC meeting was in February of 2023. Our last CPCs meeting was in February of 2024 with our draft plan open house, and we are now in October where we're looking at adoption. So our public engagement had a series of events. We had workshops for the public. We had great feedback from both of our workshops. We had a community survey that was open for a number of months where we gathered data. We also used just general census data, ArcGIS business analysts and other available data, publicly available data. We put all this together to create kind of a vision of what's happening. We call that our existing conditions analysis. So we looked at what's currently happening in Warren County to see what your future needs might be. We also conducted stakeholder interviews where we talked to individuals, department heads, real estate professionals, elected officials, and various individuals, business owners throughout the county to get their feedback on what they'd like to see. And we had a crowdsourced map where we asked people to place their needs and vision for the county on a map. We included different elements that they could describe and whether or not they would like to see improvement or whether it's going well currently. And then they could leave comment on that as well. So I won't go through all of the survey and public feedback results, but some of the primary needs that we saw were the importance of being in the proximity to the Des Moines metro. We see that as pairing with local economy. You have a great opportunity to increase your local economy, but a lot of that depends on enhancing and leaning on that proximity and improving infrastructure and business opportunities. We also saw schools as a huge asset, safety, low crime, and as the importance, we also saw agriculture, which we tried to preserve. With our future land use map, you don't see a huge difference from your existing land use map except for that it prioritizes kind of where certain things will go. So instead of allowing for agricultural, commercial, anywhere in the county, we prioritize that on primary roadways so that increased traffic doesn't impact your roads anymore. That was a huge concern for residents was the quality of roads and maintenance needs of roads. We also saw transportation, like I said, as a huge need. That's why we strategically placed these industrial and agricultural industrial areas along primary roadways. And now we're going to get into the goals. Are there any questions about the process or any of the feedback?
Yeah. Yeah.
You have a question?
I just, I wanted to know how many folks participated in the engagement part of it?
For the survey, I believe it was 300 and some odd individuals. I don't remember the exact number. At the open houses, the first one, I think we had about 25, and the second one, we had about 40. Any other questions on the process?
So where is the feedback that they presented?
It's in an appendix in the plan. So you can read through all of the survey results in there.
How is that applied to the plan?
So we use that along with, that's the existing conditions analysis. We use that feedback along with physical attributes to the county and what we heard in our steering committees and from elected and appointed officials to establish goals that can reach what we heard from our feedback.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll start with a fun one, recreation, conservation, tourism. We heard a lot about the need to amplify your opportunities for recreation and tourism in Warren County. So our goals here are to expand recreational opportunities to improve quality of life and attract tourism, protect parkland, waterways, and floodplains to provide space for nature and recreation, support and promote tourism opportunities, especially those that embrace the culture of Warren County and preserve Warren County's rural views. So I mentioned that each of these goals also has some strategies that you can work towards to achieve the goals. Those are outlined in an implementation matrix in the plan. We also included potential partners that could help to achieve those goals. For agriculture, we had two goals, which were to preserve and protect prime farmland and to support small or niche agricultural operations that contribute to agriculture, economy, and character in Warren County. Like I said, we heard that agriculture was a very important part of your county and a very important goal moving forward. So we want to make sure that we provide space to expand on that, both the active agriculture and your agricultural economy.
You said you partnered with people for that. Who were some of the partners?
For?
For engaging in, it was the slide back that you said that you partnered, had partnerships?
Oh, so in each of these, in the implementation matrix, we identify potential partners. So on our steering committee, like the County Conservation Board sat on that, the Rural Water District, various agencies were involved, and we identified those agencies that are appropriate to partner with in accomplishing each of the strategies for these goals. So it's kind of like a little roadmap for you all to identify who should be at the table for different decisions.
Okay, thank you.
For our intergovernmental coordination goals, we established those as partner with local, state, and federal agencies to increase and optimize resources available to Warren County and coordinate with surrounding and regional municipalities and agencies to improve efficiency and efficacy of planning efforts and funding opportunities. Your situation in proximity to the Des Moines metro in the region and with the state of Iowa in general, along with some of your attributes, give you a lot of opportunities, and there's a lot of leverage opportunities with these partnerships.
Okay, what does efficiency and, what was that other word? Efficiency, what?
Efficiency and efficacy of the planning efforts.
Yeah, what is that?
So like, I'm trying to think of some agencies that overlap, but two of the stakeholders that we talked to in this process were the City of Indianola and the City of Norwalk. So making sure that if they're applying for a grant and you're also going for the same grant, that you could partner those efforts and kind of increase the likelihood or the dollar amount that you would be eligible for, depending on the grant or the resource. There's also regional authorities and regional entities that you can partner with. So making sure that when you're looking at these funding opportunities and the projects, we're including as many people as possible so that we can leverage that.
Okay, thank you.
I put in blank slides for questions. I just keep skipping through them. So if you do have questions, continue to stop me, please. So our transportation goals were to provide safe, efficient, multimodal, and well-maintained transportation network for all residents and visitors, prioritize accessibility for industry vehicles, essential to the well-being of the county, including agricultural and emergency vehicles. We heard the accessibility of emergency vehicles was a huge concern as well as the general transportation system in Warren County. So want to give you some opportunities to reach those goals when we can and then encourage sustainability, connectivity, and accessibility in the Warren County transportation system. For housing goals, we have planned for safe, attractive, and affordable housing to meet existing needs and forecasted housing demands at all residents of the county and plan for housing types and densities that reinforce the predominantly rural character of the unincorporated areas of the county. For economy and employment, we have enhanced the local economy of Warren County by promoting stable, diverse development that supports the needs of existing and future residents and maintain the rate and pattern of economic growth sufficient to sustain reasonable employment rates in the county, balance the real property tax base of the local cities, and strengthen local economic basis. Our resiliency goals looked at primarily natural disasters or potential, potential hazards. So those include reduce human and property impacts resulting from hazards and ensure successful and efficient recovery from disasters. For public health, we have improved access to fundamental human needs to increase general stability for Warren County residents and improve quality of life, safety, and livability of rural communities and households in Warren County. For county facilities and services, we have invest in core infrastructure improvements that benefit agricultural activity, roads, water, and broadband, and support coordination of inter-agency and inter-jurisdictional facilities and services, both public and private, to increase accessibility and reduce economic and environmental impacts of procedures, infrastructure, and maintenance. And finally, a large portion of the plan looks at land use. Our goals for land use are to encourage development in strategic areas of Warren County, ensure preservation and conservation of environmental and historic land uses in Warren County, and preserve the rural character of Warren County. And this is our future land use map. It includes the primarily agricultural districts throughout the county and then the rural commercial businesses, which you can see we've placed along the primary corridors. And then yellow is residential.
Did you take into consideration the number of houses that were within those corridors?
Yes. Are there any questions about the plan?
As I look at the map here, you can see some of the corridors. I'm going to use Highway 28 up there in the northwest part of the county. It would appear that that would be an area of a little bit higher density for rural residential. And then you can see it down there on Highway 69 in the south and Highway 65 in the south also. Were there any other corridors that started to rise up as in terms of notoriety, but for whatever reason didn't make it onto the map?
There are. Let me, so our, our future land use map just has the land use. We also have a transportation overlay. So all of the purple on this is where we would recommend denser development on your transportation corridors. And that's given the current capacity of your transportation system. These maps, just like your plan and your ordinances, should all be updated. We recommend annually, minimum of three years. So if something changes in your transportation system to where there's an increased capacity for industrial or agricultural use, we would recommend increasing the opportunities for your development along those corridors as well.
Just east of St. Mary's, what is that little pink spot right out there?
That is the, what's the interchange between?
East of St. Mary's.
East of St. Mary's? Oh, I got a little pointer here.
It doesn't show up on there, does it?
Doesn't show up on there, sorry. Thank you though. Easter? Yep, it's, yep, that's it. Okay. That is a commercial land use. So we, when we create the future land use, we also look at the existing land use and what currently exists in the county. We don't want to create non-conforming places if we don't need to.
That's the, on the big screen, the motocross.
Okay, okay, thanks.
Oh, the old racetrack. Testing, testing track, test track.
Oh, yes.
So that's already there.
Right, I got you. It seemed to be out in the middle of nowhere.
It's interesting how you've identified the nodes, especially along Interstate 35 going down the west side of the county. With the planning goals, have you broken out within each of those nodes what the expectations might be for growth or change in those areas as far as commercial and residential combination?
So we have within the plan what we call our land use categories. And so each one gives a brief description of what should go in that category. As far as what's allowed there in the future, that would be more of an ordinance kind of thing. So that would be something that you all outline in the future with your ordinances. So this is just an opportunity. As far as your transportation and capturing that economic opportunity along the interstate, these are areas where development would be appropriate. As far as specifically what goes there, that's up to the ordinances and future development proposals.
Are there any other questions? No. Lindsay, do you have anything to add?
Marvin Grace stopped in my office this afternoon and visited with me. I did not think he would make it tonight, and I didn't see him in the audience. So I did tell him that I would state, and I had talked to Sarah under, on page 77, where it's public health, and then on 78, under Strategy B, where it talks about improved food security and healthy food access for Warren County residents. He wanted to talk about promote and incentivize small farm production, i.e. like fruits, berries, nuts, vegetables, little farms, like microfarming. And so I told him I would mention that to Sarah, but I thought that would be, it would, he thought, he and I thought it would fall under like Action 2. And then this is something like microfarm that would, could be defined in an ordinance and then addressed through the ordinance. And he thought that sounded like a good idea. And then the only other thing I wanted to, he was the only one who'd stepped in and left any comment. And then the other thing was, was that on October 14th, the zoning commission did meet, and they did recommend approval of the land use plan, five to zero, to recommend approval to you, so.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we're at the point now, this is a public hearing, so we want to hear from others that are here tonight. So if you step up, if you give your name, it'd be helpful if you'd provide your address as well. And then clearly use the microphone so we can all hear you.
I'll try.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. If you'd provide us with your name, please, for the record.
Don't count this as part of my three minutes, all right? My, I'm Alan McGruder. And I won't give you a slight background. I came here from St. Louis University and taught at Simpson College. At St. Louis University, I taught in the research methodology series. So a little bit of this is part of my expertise. I do not question the integrity of this board, and I don't question the integrity of the people who did this. I do question some of the methodology, and that's what I wanted to point out to you. First of all, when we do research, there are two main things we have to find. We have to have validity, and we have to have reliability. When you're finished with the research, if you don't have reliability, you don't have validity. Reliability means you get the same results if you do this again. Validity means you're asking the right people the right question at the right time. I question that in this. To start with, when I tried to do this, I needed some figures. Nowhere in here did I see a statement about the total population of Warren County. I was able to calculate it. I went to page 12. On page 12, there's a circular statistic on municipalities and unincorporated. I assume if you add those two together, that would be the population of Warren County. But I don't know where those figures came from. I don't know whether the children that live here were included in that population. If they were, this would not be good at all. I calculated the unincorporated and it's 30%, excuse me, 20, 30%, and the municipality is 70%. You then had, at some sort, later on, you put together, and I'm not sure of the page that it's on, but you, you had, I think it was a survey, but I don't know how you got those people collected. If 30% of the people are unincorporated and 70% are incorporated, does that match, does that sample match that? If it did, it should have been drawn as a random system by which, it's called stratified random, where you choose a number of people that are in the unincorporated, and you choose another number of people that are incorporated, and you have 30% of that group put together that is from the unincorporated and 70% that's from the incorporated. I don't think that was done here. And therefore, I question the validity. I think from reading this, and I did read this several times, I gather that we put together the goals using this sample as part of that. If this is not a valid sample, then are your goals valid?
Oh, I see.
These are the kind of things that we did at St. Louis U when we taught our people how to do research and so forth. I would hope that you take some of this into consideration. If this is not a valid study, I don't question the people that did it. I think they, they meant to do a good job, but I think they may not have had enough information. Questions?
No, thank you.
Thank you for sharing your comments. Does MSA want to respond at all to some of the questions ever raised? I think it'd be helpful if we just, let's just do a rolling situation because I think that would be helpful.
Yeah, so the data that we have is all from the US Census Bureau, from the most recent census. So I hope that answers your question about where we gathered that from. The, the population data, we gathered that from the US Census Bureau, from the latest census. And as far as the validity, the, when we're working in social sciences in real time, we don't always have the opportunity to choose who is doing these studies. We open it to the public so that everyone has an equal opportunity to provide their feedback. So no, we did not take random samples. I'm sure that if we did the study again, it would probably change, but so has the population of Warren County since we began this. So as far as social sciences and working in planning, it's a standard procedure of how we collect our data. But I understand from a research standpoint where you're coming from.
Okay. So next person that wants to come up and speak? Again, state your name and your address and...
Jane Colachecki, 12461 G-58 Highway in Indianola. I have a multitude, I mean, I went through this thing, and I have a multitude of questions, but because of the time, I'm just going to narrow it down to maybe my top two issues. And it also has to do with data collection and methodology. With only 303 respondents out of an adult population of 40, or 39,000, you have less than 1% of the population actually providing feedback. And I don't believe that that low of a rate, which is 0.75%, really provides you with an accurate vision of what the county wants, particularly when 92% of that feedback was from one specific quadrant within the county. So I think, you know, again, I'm not questioning the data from the US Census Bureau. I understand that. But perhaps the methodology on the survey could have been modified so that people were given other opportunities to actually participate. Clearly, the online version and having to come to Indianola was not working. So a different methodology may have been helpful. The targeted lower response just doesn't allow for recommendations that reflect the entire county. The other thing I have a question about is the agriculture economic data. We spend a lot of time in this report talking about economic development, but there's no real reference to economic impact. If you look at the economic table on page nine, there's a pie chart that shows employment by industry. And agriculture is a little sliver on that page and represents only 1.79% of the employment. And when you pull that data from US geologic, or US census data, rather, from 2020, what you find is that the title agriculture actually fits forestry, fishing, hunting, mining, and agriculture. It's not specific to farming. It's a more broad sense because it's a demographic study, not a study of actual agriculture. So I would argue perhaps that the... So I would argue perhaps that the data here should have been retrieved from the USDA National Agriculture Statistics Services and looked at economic impact on agriculture and not jobs, because obviously, a cornfield doesn't employ a lot of people. But the economic impact of that cornfield is significant. So when you look at the NASS data from the USDA, you're finding that the market value of the products sold in Warren County for agriculture is actually a hundred and seventy million, nine-hundred-and-seventy-three thousand dollars. But nowhere in the report do we ask ourselves, how does the growth on that map affect that economic base of that individual hundred-and-seventy-million-dollar industry? And I think that's missing in the report. The net cash farm income from that product is fifty-eight million dollars. If we start to impact that industry, what will be the impact on that fifty-eight million dollars? So while the employment figures might be considerably low, the industry valuation is actually very high. And we just aren't dealing with economic, the economics of agriculture in that regard. We're strictly looking at this from an economic development perspective, and I think we're missing a huge piece of data. Nothing in the report provides information on that economic impact, that hundred-and-seventy-million-dollar industry. Nothing in the report assesses the economic impact of the reduction of the fifty-eight million dollars as a result of the development outlined. And if we reduce farmland, we obviously reduce farm income. But what are those numbers? I, I, I'm not saying that we should throw out the whole report, but, but this is an incredibly important industry in our county, and I think to ignore that data would be unwise. So I'd like to see a comprehensive assessment of the economic impact data on the developed, development proposed and land use plan. Prior to approval, I believe we should include assessment of the appropriate USDA data, not just the US Census data, so that we can rely on data that goes beyond demographic focus. I think we should broaden the input from residents as well to make sure that we actually are talking to farmers in southern, the southern portion of the county, because if you've got ninety-two percent of your feedback coming from the upper northwest corridor, then I'm really doubting how much input we actually receive from that lower. If you look at the math on it, on a percentage basis, it's less than fourteen people who would have provided input, both from the city of Indianola and the southern portion of the rural county. So I just think we had to broaden our research a little bit more and look at some, some data beyond what was collected in this report. There's also, as you can see from this, I've got boatloads of input on public health and urgency management and all kinds of, so if you want that input, I did submit it during the survey portion. I do not see any of my submissions in the, in the summary that is provided back to you. So I don't know what happened to, you know, the information I provided. I'm not, I, there are certainly more experts in this county in public health than me, but you certainly.
Are you talking about your comments like right now? And, and the fact that they're not recorded? Because they are recorded. Everything that, that's happening in here right now is recorded and publicly available.
The survey responses that we sent in and the statements in that are publicly available? I don't see it in the report.
No, that's a very good question.
Yeah.
Can you respond to that?
Yeah. Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you.
So as far as the concerns about the survey results, as I mentioned before, it is standard procedure in planning to allow the feedback to be the general public. So we open these public input opportunities to everyone in the county. We had written or hard copy surveys available in public spaces, so people could go to libraries, the zoning department here in Indianola, to fill them out if they wanted to. We also promoted them at our in-person events as well, the hard copy versions. As far as input from a rural area, I would say that this is higher than a lot of places that we've seen in rural areas. Moving towards the economic challenge that Jane brought up, this is not an economic assessment. This makes recommendations of how the economic situation fits into the bigger picture of Warren County. You'll find in Goal Two of Economy and Employment Strategy B states that we would support the development of a county comprehensive economic development strategy, or a SEDS plan, which would be that comprehensive economic development study. And then survey results are published in Appendix A. So we don't include individual comment in that section to, to protect anonymity. Some people provide comments that are revealing to their identity, so we don't include those personal comments. But we do have the statistics and the full survey data in Appendix A of the report.
So Appendix A would have the comments that the.
No, we do not publish comments.
No, I'm, I'm saying, but her comments would be included as, in a general sense.
In the data, yes.
Yes, in the data.
The survey results are published in Appendix A, yes.
I, I had specifically asked you where the feedback, where it was, and you said that it was provided in the survey. So if we have a member, one member of the public who has identified their comments not in there, how can I feel that this is done fairly?
So I'm not sure that I understand your question. Can you rephrase it?
Okay, because one member of the public has come up and stated that their comments were not found in this report. And I asked you specifically, where were all of the feedback that was gathered during this outreach? And you told me it was in this report. How can I trust and vote on this tonight?
So I, I don't recall being asked if every single comment was in the report.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay.
The data in the report, but we don't publish the entirety of three hundred-plus persons' individual comments, especially because some of those are revealing to their identity. We choose to protect anonymity. That's also why we don't publish our recordings of our stakeholder interviews. Those are all transcripts that we store anonymously because we don't want to expose people's personal opinions to the public.
Usually, people know that when they're dealing with the government, that whatever they say or do is probably going to be recorded.
Right, we're not part of the government, we're a private organization.
But you were hired by the government to do this, and the public is aware of that.
We are not authorized to record and to submit to you people's individual.
Then you should not answer my question when I asked you where the feedback was to those surveys and that outreach that you did. You should not have answered in affirmative that those comments are located in this report.
Are we able to go back to the previous where she asked that in the meeting? Because I don't recall specifically being asked where comments are published.
Okay, I, I can read you what I, what I asked you. The feedback, can we read it?
Yeah, the report is in Appendix A.
All of the feedback from everybody?
No, we do not publish individuals' opinions in here.
See, that was a, yeah, that's what I thought.
That's very misleading.
Appendix A is, just to make it sure, I'm understanding what, what's being questioned here. Appendix A is a summary of comments that have been made by many people.
Right, it's the data.
So maybe by one person or maybe by ten people, correct?
Right.
But they're not self-identifying, correct?
Yes.
And those are in Appendix A.
We do not include the specific comments. Like I mentioned, when we record and we have our stakeholder interviews, we have, what we use is a qualitative analysis software. So we put the transcript from those into a software that identifies what was discussed in those. We don't release those to the public. We include when we do those that this would be anonymous.
The summary.
It's not appropriate to release people's individual thoughts and feelings to the public. And some people feel that their safety would be at risk if their opinions were disclosed to the public.
I don't know if that answers your question.
Yeah, it answers my question on how their methodology is. I do not approve of it, and to me, it sounds like the Delphi method.
Okay.
And are you aware of what the Delphi method is?
I am. I will continue to protect individuals' anonymity so that they're able to speak what they would like to see in Warren County and other places that I serve. And I'm sorry that you feel that way.
Okay, well, I was elected to protect them as well. So, thank you.
Okay, are there any others that wish to come up and speak tonight? We have another one here. Again, if you'd present your name and your address and your subject matter.
Bill Bosch, seventy-three-twenty-three-R-fifty-seven-Highway. I actually wasn't going to speak to that tonight, I just wanted to listen to it. But I agree with him. I said before, it looked like First Regulators put this together. It's, it's real, really sad. I did listen to a agenda on October second, and it was kind of talking about what she had mentioned, that they summarized what people said in this meeting. Well, and, and they didn't save it, and they don't mention their names and their addresses. We get up here and give our names and addresses. So I don't understand that. And to have somebody summarize, that can be an abuse of power. I mean, you have to have the proof. And I'd, I'd assume you agree with that. I mean, it, it's just, it was just childish, the whole thing was.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So anybody else that would like to come forward, share their thoughts? Okay, board members, anything else?
I have nothing.
Okay. Oh, Marilyn. Please, please state your name.
Yes, Marilyn Alderman, ninety-five, nineteen oh five-seven Drake Street, Carlisle, Iowa. I agree with the first two speakers. Won't go into any more of that. I have been very opposed to the ten acres. I do not feel that is preserving farmland. I'll give you an example. If you have a farmer out here with two hundred acres, and his health is failing, but he's still able to do some of the farming, he wants to bring his son and maybe grandson into the operation, they need a place. You're taking off twenty more acres. That is not necessary to build a home. Go and try to get a loan to build a home and not plot it, platter it out. Ten acres for an individual that comes out and just, excuse me, wants to move out in the country, they don't have the equipment to take care of ten acres. It's way too much, and then you end up with junkyards. You have a lot of place to put stuff. Five acres is still quite a bit. I, I do believe two acres is too small in this day and age to have a nice-sized home, an accessory building, your septic system. I do think that needs to be increased from two. But the five and ten acres, I don't believe is preserving our farmland. And I would have liked to seen more unincorporated people with input on this committee. The cities and municipalities have their own land use and their own ordinances. And I would have liked to seen more input from the farmers, the people in the unincorporated areas that are affected by this.
Marilyn, just so you understand, the plan does not address the ordinances. The ordinances are, are yet to come.
But it is going through with this because we're addressing forty-one, forty-two, and forty-three, I believe.
Yeah, but just, just, I want to make it real clear so everybody understands. We're not talking about ordinances tonight. Tonight, this is just a general planning document.
But I'm still saying this has been brought up in the land use plan as ten acres. And so I'm addressing it here as such.
Okay.
Because it is tied to this. And I would have liked to seen that all taken care of separately. So I have to speak to it now under land use.
Got it. Thank you very much.
I understand what you're saying.
Yep. Thank you. Anyone else that would like to speak? Do I have a motion to close public hearing?
I'll make a motion to close public hearing.
Second?
Your call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye. Okay, now we are on discussion. We've had the public hearing now, so now the question becomes whether or not we wish to take any action at this time or just have a general discussion about this. What's the, what's the feeling of the board?
Well, I, I think it's important to point out, like, it's not, on behalf of Warren County, I think our consultant MSA, from my standpoint, and I've been with this project for a couple of years now, they've been nothing but incredibly above-board and completely transparent in everything that they've told us. They are a, you know, a strong guide for us. They do this every day, setting up land use plans and what's important. And the attempt to go out to the public, I've never seen anything so strong, you know? Multiple times trying to get information from our public. I think they've done a good job of that. And I don't think there's been any information that, you know, they, we've compiled and manipulated and spit out in a different way than the way it was received. And if that's implied, I would say, you know, watching this for quite some time and getting, getting to know this, this company, they've been nothing but extremely professional and, and extremely informative on the things we should be thinking about. None of us up here are research experts from a credited, beautiful university. We hear the problems, okay? So Warren County had a land use plan and ordinances that didn't align with each other. That's the way it was when I got here. Okay, so that created a lot of problems relative to executing our zoning strategy and our land use planning. We had a very difficult time. We were making reactive decisions every meeting on certain circumstances. Now, I know people that study this know that's not how we should make decisions. We should have a plan. We should have documents that we can rely on, policies and procedures, you know, to execute the process of growing incrementally, growing a little bit at a time, a planned growth. This is a planned growth document. I can assure you that what we were doing four years ago was nothing close to, you know, getting this much consensus. You say less than one percent, but everybody I've talked to feels the need that we have a plan. And we've been, we've been messing around with this for a long time. And I think we're moving slow. So that's what I think. I think we should be having ordinances approved tonight. I think we should have some inspecting, some building codes that we're building to standards. We don't do that here. All the surveyors in our, in our area, in all the counties, they come here to develop. They go, this, we're the busiest in Warren County because you really don't, you're not really dotting your i's, crossing your t's. We hear from, you know, people calling down here wanting to permit. We got to call today. Hey, I need to pull permit on a project in Warren County, what do I do? You don't have to do that here. So, you know, you guys want to sit around here and take years to make a decision on a plan? I think we need to get with the program. That's my opinion. We need to make decisions and lead and get this stuff structured. So the next board that comes in here has a plan and some documents and some policies. Because right now, we don't have them. They don't align, and it's, it's, it's screwed up right now. We're trying to fix it. So that's where I'm at. And this fixes it. For, this fixes it as much as we can fix it right now, for as much work as we've done. And, you know, the data and the whatever, you know, we can come up with a hundred reasons not to do this tonight. There's way more reasons than the ones I've heard. But we got to have a plan, and we got to, we got to at least start with something. Because tomorrow, if we don't improve this, then we're going to go back to square one. And I can tell you, that's not where we want to go. That's my opinion. I appreciate MSA, and I appreciate our public. And if anybody's ever in this position, it's really hard to get the information out of the public. And that's all I'm going to say.
I do agree with you, Darren. It is hard to get information out to the public. That part, I agree. And I do agree that we do need a plan, but I don't think this is the plan.
Well, if you have a better one, Crystal, let's hear it.
Yep. The ten acres is not liked.
That's not what we're talking about.
And I, I, I understand that, but it, it made me question where I got the ten acres from. And it was by a company that I believe has a preconceived outcome by channeling our citizens to accept a point of view that is imposed on us all while convincing us it's our idea. I believe that.
Who was doing that, Crystal?
I'm not up for debate, this is my time to speak. I believe that these are trained facilitators that. I believe that these are trained facilitators that present a range of choices to a group, but have tailored those choices to a preconceived outcome. I was a trained counterintelligence special agent for the United States Army, and this is a textbook use of the Delphi method. And I will not approve this tonight.
I give my two cents. I'm, I'd like to vote on it. And I think this should be the resolution. That's my opinion. And this stuff is not in stone. I mean, whatever you're seeing in this plan, a future board can change this. The public can come with certain areas of this and talk about it. This is not, you know, permanent for, you know, 20 years, which was on the agenda. It's, it's a document that's dynamic, that can change over time and should change over time as everything changes in our world. It's a starting point. We're not going to get everything, every i dotted and every t crossed for every citizen. We've heard from four people tonight, 53,000 people in this county. I don't know if we've heard from everybody either, but I can't wait another year. We shouldn't. It's an opportunity to get something done, and we should do it.
The planning process is just that. It's a planning process. And it's something that, it's a guide. It's not an ordinance. So, that, you know, as I spoke with Marilyn, you know, this is not ordinance time. This is, this is a, a planning document time. It's a guide. And with that in mind, I, just looking back, the timeline that was expressed here tonight, going back through, first part of when I believe this plan was formally started was back in November of 2022. That's actually predating my time to even be on the board. So, this is, this whole planning process here that we're involved in spans more than one board of supervisors. So, this is not something that has been taken lightly or considered in just a quick yesterday-type timeline. We saw the, the long list of engagements, and that's not, you know, people, people were sought. Their, their information, their responses were sought in multiple settings, multiple opportunities, both in person and in the electronic means, engagement gatherings, all those types of things. So, from what I can tell, this is quite an effort to go forward and try to make something happen and to follow through with what more than one board of supervisors has tried to accomplish. I think, obviously, we're not dealing with ordinances tonight. So, that's really not in the discussion at all. It's really putting forth the guide and the plan. I think in light of the fact that we are at this point, it's been going on now for two and a half years. I think that based upon what I've seen, what I've heard, input I've received again tonight, I think those are items that, they're well, well-founded, good questions. But I think that we also can feel good about what has been done. I, I don't see that the, something has been thrust upon us or somehow the study's been manipulated in, in some way at this time. I don't feel that way at all. So, without objection here, I, I would move the resolution. We do have a sample resolution here tonight. I'd like to read it. So, this is my motion to, to adopt this resolution. Whereas Warren County adopted a land use plan pursuant to Iowa Code 352.5 in 2002, and whereas recognizing the need to update the county's land use plan to acknowledge growth and development in Warren County, the Warren County Board of Supervisors allocated funds to update the land use plan. And whereas members of the community have participated in steering committee meetings and public open house meetings, and whereas the Warren County Zoning Commission, the Zoning Office, the Board of Supervisors, and other county offices involved in growth and development working with MSA Professional Services have worked for nearly two years to update the plan that will move the county forward during the next two decades. And whereas the Warren County Zoning Commission voted on October 14th, 2024, five to zero, to recommend approval of the Warren County Iowa Comprehensive Land Use Plan, 2024 to 2044, to the Warren County Board of Supervisors now. Therefore, the Warren County Board of Supervisors considers approval of the Warren County Iowa Comprehensive Land Use Plan, 2024 to 2044. Be it resolved that the Warren County Board of Supervisors hereby approves the Warren County Iowa Comprehensive Land Use Plan, 2024 to 2044. I would move adoption of this resolution. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Nay.
Peter?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye. Okay. Thank you. And do I have a motion to adjourn?
We got to go out of, uh, do we need to, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Roll call.
McIntyre?
Aye.
Peter?
Aye.
Snell?
Aye. Thank you, everybody, for attending.